Six o'clock, and I'd like to call this meeting to order at Lancaster County Council here on April 22nd, 2024. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I would especially like to welcome our art contest winners from the Lancaster County Government Month, from Lancaster County School District. We're glad y'all could be here, and I think Mr. Marsdall will have a special presentation for y'all here in just a few minutes. So with that, would you please rise and join Councilmember Alan Blackman as he alleges in the pledge of allegiance, followed by her invocation?
Let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the living, the dead, and the justicous.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you sow upon us each and every day. Lord, we're so happy to have this group here today, especially with these art presentations coming up. Lord, be with each one of them. Lord, we ask that you be with this council as we do the business of the county, and may it be pleasing in your sight what we do and what we say here tonight. Lord, forgive us of our many sins. These things we ask in Jesus' name, and all God's people said.
Amen. Let's move on down to our approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Carr and Sacramence McGriff. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of our agenda tonight. Let's move on down to our citizens' comments. Please bear in mind, this is not a period of dialogue with council or a question-and-answer period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. I ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. First, we have Odell Steele.
Good evening. I'm Odell Steele. I live at 1744 Old Rixburg Road in Chester County. Tonight, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan. I have 900 acres off Grace Avenue and Bethel Road. It is presently category, the category is rural. It really doesn't meet the definition of rural because it has infrastructure. It has water, sewer, gas, power, and very important access. It has access to Grace Avenue. It borders Grace Avenue a ways, and then it has access in three different locations through the Grace Development. It has access on Bethel Road in two different places beyond Rum Creek. It also has access on the backside or the south side, I guess, of the property to Highway 200. There's two different roads into 200. And what I'm here tonight, and I'm asking you to re-category, put this in another category, is growth area. We have met with planning and the infrastructure folks in Lancaster County and have talked with them about possible development out there. We had, we have presently three different companies talking with us about that property, and that's pretty much the gist of it. We're asking for the, just to re-category to growth from rural.
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Thank you.
Nancy Archer.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Archer. I live at 1893 Sandbrook Road in Indianland, South Carolina. I live in Brook Chase Community Townhomes. My purpose tonight is to see if maybe we could get some eyes put on a situation that we've, I've been working on basically for seven years now. There is a business at the beginning of the street that faces 521 and basically connects to our property. It has been grandfathered in as a car repair place, but it is an environmental dump. We have had severe rodent problems. Because of that business, there was an abandoned mobile home that we finally got removed thanks to the zoning department and one of our council members, and some tractor-trailer trucks were parked. We did get those removed, and once those were removed, you could see the severity of the problem there, the things that have just been dumped. Mobile home that's on its side tilting, it is within their fence. We just want to get it cleaned up. There are things that are actually in the right-of-way. There are abandoned cars that are rusting. Now tell them what kind of contaminants are going into the soil. There's a sandblaster that's actually in the right-of-way. A few years ago, I did get somebody, I guess, from engineering to come out, and she measured. The sandblaster is in the right-of-way. None of that has been cleaned up. We have asked numerous times. We're not asking the company to move. We just want it cleaned up. The residents that live on Stony Creek have spent a lot of money on pest control. Some of them have gotten very sick just from the poisons that they've had to put out. So I don't know what kind of procedure we need to follow, but I think, you know, it's an environmental disaster at this point. I do have pictures, if y'all would like to see them. Okay? Thank you.
Robin Willis.
Hi, I'm Robin Willis. I live at 2024 East Park Drive in Lancaster. We have a safety traffic problem on our road. There is, starting with the first one, we have a speed limit sign that is only five feet tall. It's crooked. It's facing the wrong way. So if you don't live on the road, you have no idea what's the speed limit. It is 30 miles an hour, which it needs to be dropped down to 20. There is now 74 houses on our block. It is a cul-de-sac. There are way, way many children on this road who are always running in and out of their driveways, houses, roads, and there is a speeding problem on our street. We have multiple challenged children on our road. The speed limit, I'm told, in the beginning was 15 miles an hour, prior to all the new homes seven years ago when the new development came in. So we would like to ask for it to be no more than 20 miles an hour. The speeders come from the bottom of the hill, come up, and fly down, because you all agreed to beautifully repave our road, and it is a nice road. But it is now literally a drag strip, like literally. It's a drag strip. One sign on the road is not enough. Why is one sign, one speed sign, and the other side gets to do whatever they want? There is no speed sign on the other side of the road at all. If it's good for one side, it should be on the other side as well. So 20 miles an hour, and put a 20 mile an hour sign on the other side of the road as well, and put "Watch out for children," "Special needs children" signs up, and, you know, speed humps would really work.
Is that it? I'll respond in just a minute, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our citizens' comments. Ms. Snowden is back. Ms. Archer, I think you're looking for her. Give Ms. Snowden your information. And Ms. Willis over here. Ms. Snowden, would you also, she'll stay around. Ms. Snowden is our deputy county administrator. She'll stare you in the right direction and help you, okay? All right, so just, she'll be with you in just a minute, okay? All right, thank you. All right, like I said, that concludes our citizens' comments. We have three special presentations.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. We have one electronic citizens' comment.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize. Mr. Chairman and council members, you have one electronic citizens' comments at your seats. It is from Roe Harris from Lancaster County. She is asking council to consider Juneteenth, which would be June 19th, as an observed or floating holiday for all county employees.
I apologize. I didn't say that one. Let's move on down. We have three special presentations. The first one is our recognition of our art contest winners for Lancaster County Government Month, for Lancaster County School District, Mr. Dennis Marsdall, our county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. I'm pleased to highlight that as part of National Counties Month, every April, we celebrate counties and the work and services we do, certainly with the outstanding employees that we have. But we also like to engage the community, kind of do an opportunity, I said, to highlight our services, everything from the airport to stormwater and animal shelter and all kinds of planning and development, things you may not think about on a daily basis, being provided by the county. And so we shared with our county school system, Lancaster County Public Schools, and engaged groups to encourage them to do art or essay contests, talking about looking a little bit to our future. And so we have two winners, one from Harrisburg Elementary School and also a group from Clinton Elementary School. So I'm going to first invite to come forward. I have certificates and some gift cards. Everyone loves Chick-fil-A as a kid, so we've got some $20 Chick-fil-A gift cards. But I'd like to first have the Clinton Elementary students come forward right to the middle and come join you. Aliyah Montz, Carson Rodriguez, Aliyah Bailey, if the four of you come forward, and there's their picture that they submitted, and they wrote a nice essay about how they came to it. And if you all would talk into the microphone, we'll pull that down and have you read that for us. So we have a couple of certificates. I want to first thank them. Turn that picture around.
You need some better angle for your pictures. Get out there in the middle.
All right.
We'll give you plenty of time.
All right. Well, thank you all again. We also want to make sure that we recognize the teachers who are here with their students tonight. And so from Harrisburg, I believe we have Mr. Ferris. Is he in the office or in the audience?
Yes.
Where? Oh, from Clinton, I'm sorry. From Clinton, Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
If you'll stand up and say hi. Thank you for getting your students to apply. Appreciate that. And if you can deliver these to the other two students who are not able to join us tonight. And then we have one other one here. We said from Harrisburg. I want to first recognize the teacher. Is Ms. Massey here in the audience, Ms. Massey? Thank you for joining us tonight. She was instrumental in promoting our contest. And Ruhi Anad is here. She submitted something for us, so we want her to come up. And if she will read her essay that you can share with the county council what you wrote.
Seven, and I'm in grade one. I'm in Harrisburg Elementary School, and my teacher is Ms. Massey. I drew a lemonade stand built by me and my three friends. Last summer, we set up our shop in our community. Each played an important role. One was holding a sign to attract customers. Another was managing money. The rest of us were serving lemonade to the people. Together, we had fun and earned $40. With this, I learned that teamwork makes a dream work.
We're ready for the next topic.
All right, let's move on down to our recognition for our employee of the quarter, the first quarter of 2024, presented by Mr., our county administrator, Mr. Dennis Marsdall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and why I'm out here again. As we were talking about National Counties Month, celebrating what good work county employees do. A lot of you have the opportunity to interact with some of our public safety employees. And so we have done two ways to look at our employees. Those who do the public safety, EMS, coroner, fire, who else am I missing? Dispatch, 911, and sheriff. And so we got a separate category for those employees, and then we have our general government. As we said, everything from services, from the animal shelter to stormwater and everything in between. And so certainly happy to recognize those county employees who do the day-to-day work all the time, providing services. And a lot of it, you know, is 24/7. A lot of our employees are working late at night. And so these recognitions of the people I'm going to introduce right now were nominated by their coworkers. And so we had the opportunity where employees could nominate a coworker. Some of them had more than one nomination. And so I would like, and I know, some of the employees here have their family members with them or their coworkers or their bosses with them, directors. I'm happy to acknowledge all the county employees. But I want to first ask Scott Carmichael to come forward if he's here from our building maintenance. He was nominated. Another nominee, you know, you find a lot of time the nominees are a bit bashful. They like to be more in the background, and they don't really like to be out front. And this one's one of them, and she happens to work in the legal office, connected to the administrator's office, Ms. Donna Green. So we also have another nominee who's with us tonight, Billy Lloyd from our fire department. And then we have from our EMS is Cheyenne Martin. There she is. She's on duty. So she's able to make it from our public safety EMS. And then one of our other, two more nominees that we have here, from our communications and marketing department, the one who does all the good work on our communications, Gary Baker. He had several nominations, so thank you, Gary, very much. And then we've got one more nominee. They're going to announce the employee of the quarter. So we do these every quarter, and it's Mr. Jonathan Payne with us tonight. There's Jonathan. Thank you. So we've got another one from our public safety. And then what we want to do is we will name the employee of the quarter, again, one in public safety, one in our general government, and they receive a $100 check that they will be receiving. So I want to recognize first our public safety employee of the first quarter for 2024, Mr. Billy Lloyd. And then for our employee of the quarter for general government, Mr. Gary Baker. Congratulations. So again, to all the visitors with us tonight, you get to see just an example of all the county employees who do great work day in and day out. And so, Mr. Chairman and council members, I'm honored to present the employees of the quarter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have one more presentation of our regional park progress, Ms. Stephanie Snowden. Hey, Ms. Snowden, when you get through, did you have a chance to talk to Ms. Willis about here?
I'm going to give Ms. Willis that time.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Ms. Snowden.
All right. Thank you, Chairman and members of council. It's hard to follow outstanding employees and beautiful children, but we'll try and get through this. All right, so I want to give you an update on the regional park. As you all know, Andrew Pack of Woolport, his team has been procured to help usher us through this. And so they specialize in park planning and design and have been working with us since 2002. The internal team includes Scott Hernandez of IT, Kathy McDaniel of procurement, Chris Clouden, Parks and Recreation, and Calvin Alexander of project, our project manager. So we've had a number of meetings, and so I just want to walk you through the timeline. Right now, you're seeing the preliminary site plan that was largely based off of the master plan. And then just want to run through an activity timeline for you. So again, in October of 2022, Woolport started working with us and working on the master plan. In October of 2023, they presented that plan, and it was adopted by council. In December of 2024, the bond funding was secured, December of 2023, I'm sorry, the bond funding was secured for $34.7 million. In January of 2024, we held a kickoff meeting that included our project team. In February of 2024, we started our consultation and coordination and talking to USCL on the NCAA standards for materials and for the dimensions for the baseball fields, March of 2024, and it will run through 2024. Our Parks and Rec team has been meeting with Lennar Homes. As you know, that is an adjacent master plan 55-plus community, and our folks have been discussing collaborations and trying to understand at least what kind of amenities they will have. We know they will be utilizing outside trails and pickleball courts. And then, right now, we're in the phase of evaluating and assessing the technological needs of the park that will hopefully enhance visitor experience, as well as looking at the IT infrastructure needs to include park security, surveillance, access, and alarm systems. And also during this month, we are finalizing and meticulously reviewing the architectural portion of the contract for resource optimization opportunities. This is a chart that kind of gives you a visual representation, and just want to point out two things. First, the planned groundbreaking for October of 2024 this year, and then also just noting that council will be receiving quarterly, monthly briefings, and also input when we get to that portion of actually finalizing the plan. So you will have numerous opportunities for input. And then just going through the timeline to completion, December 2023 to April 2024, due diligence and programming, May 2024 to August 2024, schematic and design development, October 2024. We have a couple of dates that we'll be working with you all on, the groundbreaking, April 2024 to November, construction documents and permitting, and December 2024 to March 2025 bidding, April 2025 to July 26, roughly, construction. And I do have Mr. Pack here, if you also have any other specific questions.
Can you go back to the original drawings, Ms. Snowden? At one time, we had the discussion about having a cross-country trail on this part of the park system, and I don't see that on there anywhere. Did that get dropped out, or?
No, it's still on there. There's probably some of those other amenities that Stephanie was talking about that we're still evaluating. Those loop trails, or we call it figure-eight trails, they're still in there. That 5K will still fit to this site.
All right, thank you.
I don't see it in there.
The only thing-
They just said it was in there.
Well, I think the 20-acre property, once that gets purchased, they won't be able to get that 5K in there, but it's designed to fit.
So it's going to go in the additional property, not the current?
Well, I think it was going to run across both properties.
Could you go back to where they had the first slide? There, yeah, go back to that one. The- The only thing that I would even question is, when we started this, this is not a park for Roslyn. This is a county park, and consideration of amenities should not be based on what they're building in there. I mean, we were, and the, I think, we don't want it, it's not, it's not a Roslyn park, and we're not going to name it as a county park. So, you know, we just need to make sure that we, we build in it for the younger people.
You know, with that being said, it seems like that we're giving them an opportunity, but we wanted folks to know, make sure that that was a countywide park and not specifically for that development, so.
And that is duly noted. The only point that we were making is that they're going to be neighbors, so just understanding, we understand that this is the county park, this is for the community. The only thing we're trying to do is get an understanding as to what they have, and if there's an opportunity to actually understand what they have, and maybe they may be willing to open up pickleball courts, or that they're going to actually develop trails that, rather than us having to reinvent the wheel, working with them. So just trying to be a good neighbor, because as y'all know, 55 and over crowd can be a little feisty, so.
You know, that walking trail is good, but anything else, I think, you know, because we don't want for the county citizens to cringe on their property.
Right.
So we need to make sure that we don't do that. I can understand walking trails, but certainly not any type of, you know, equipment or anything like that.
Yes, ma'am, understood.
And we do have a history, you know, we have issues with the Walnut Creek Park, because a lot of residents think that's their park, but it's a county park.
Right, so I think just Mr. Clouden is just trying to make sure that he has some open lines of communication and that we understand, because I believe that the first homes are going to be going in this summer. But understood, council.
We just don't want it to where, they say it's our amenities, that pickleball is ours, we get first choice, you know, we don't want to get into stuff like that, they don't own anything in there.
Yes.
You know, we don't mind them coming into the park, but far as saying, that's part of our amenities for our park.
When I spoke, we were understanding their amenities, they're going to have pickleball courts and trails and stuff like that. So understood, so I may have misspoken, it's not them having access to ours, it's theirs. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Let's move on down to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 7A and 7B.
I have a motion from Mr. Mosdeller, a second from Ms. McGriff. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Let's move down to our non-consent agenda, 8A, Resolution 1259-R 2024, transfer of a fee agreement between Unique USA Inc., 793 Fort MHLLC, and 793 Fort Mill Acquisition LLC. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Corn, second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Mosdeller, Ms. Amy Corn.
Good evening, county council members. You have before you Resolution 1259-R 2024, transfer fee agreement between Unique USA Inc., 793 FMH LLC, and 793 Fort Mill Acquisition LLC. In 2016, Unique USA Inc. began operation in Lancaster County at 793 Fort Mill Highway in Indianland, South Carolina. Since 2019, the company's first tax year, Unique USA and 793 FMH LLC have always met or exceeded their investment and job creation requirements. In the third quarter of 2023, Lancaster County was notified by the South Carolina Department of Revenue that 793 FMH LLC had sold the building to 793 Fort Mill Acquisition LLC, and therefore the property reverted to Lancaster County for assessment, and the tax bills for 2023 were issued without a fee and local incentives applied. When 793 Fort Mill Acquisition LLC received their 2023 tax bill, economic development was contacted. The matter was reviewed, and it was determined that a resolution to transfer the fee should be executed. 793 Fort Mill Acquisition LLC, in good faith, while the matter was being reviewed, paid their tax bill for 2023 in full and on time. Therefore, the passing of Resolution 1259-R 2024 will result in a refund to 793 Fort Mill Acquisition LLC. The estimated refund total, based on previous years, will be $361,109. This matter is well within the statutory two-year time limit, and per the treasurer's office, the refund will be drawn back from the following accounts: county operating, court mandate, capital improvement, school debt, school operating, USC Lancaster. Economic Development is recommending that the county council approve Resolution 1259-R 2024. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration on this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I certainly don't have a problem with it, but as I read through the agenda, and well, as I read through, more specifically, the transfer agreement, it talks about the SSRC agreement. Does that SSRC agreement have the FLO in it also?
So, yes, so when the transfer, when they sold, there was not a record of 793 Fort Mill Acquisition owning that property, therefore it did not get the fee. So what will happen is after you guys pass this resolution, then DOR will be notified, and that process will start, where they will certify, and then it will come down to the auditor's office, and those SSRCs will be applied.
I guess we're approving the SSRCs for the period of time and the amounts, but we don't have a FLO at this point, do we, for the new, for the purchaser?
Right, they will, once, so it kind of works backwards, you guys have to do the resolution first, and then the documents get forwarded and completed by the new owner, and those are submitted to DOR, and then they will certify.
So when we do this, we're approving the FLO as it was written originally?
Correct, because the only thing that Unique USA is still part of that FLO, the only portion is the building owner has changed, so it's just going to, this will be added to the FLO to notify of the new ownership of the building.
So we're not adding the new owner as an affiliate?
It's just a transfer, as they say.
Okay.
I mean, you could do it multiple ways, this is just a resolution to transfer from that original ownership to the new ownership.
I guess in the transfer agreement, though, it doesn't talk about transferring the FLO. It only talks about the SSRC agreement.
Well, because we only do the SSRC, but we only do the SSRC once it is certified by DOR. So we don't, we don't do any of the processing of the fee portion, so we're only kind of addressing the SSRC part, because that's the part that we play.
But if a building's sitting here with a FLO, and it transfers out to Alan Blackman, the FLO dies, right? And Alan Blackman doesn't get the FLO unless he applies for it.
No, like I said, that's why we're just transferring. So rather than Amy Corn.
FLO follows.
Correct.
FLO rights follow, but the SSRC does not.
No, it all will follow. So we don't, this does not have a standalone SSRC. It has a FLO and an SSRC. So therefore, we apply SSRCs after DOR has certified through the FLO.
And I don't know if this helps, but in the resolution, it has where, as it says, "The SSRC agreement, as amended in the FLO, are where applicable individually and collectively referred to as a fee agreement." So we do have them linked.
Okay, all right.
All right, any more discussion? I think you, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Those likewise, we have unanimous approval of Resolution 1259-R 2024. Let's go down to our third reading of our ordinance, 2024-1900 regarding adoption of the Lancaster 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Who made that motion?
I made it.
Ms. McGriff made a motion, and a second from Mr. Graham. Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir, thank you. As a reminder of what we have in front of you on the dais, what this ordinance does is gives a first, or gives a final review, not first review, to a wish list of programs and initiatives inspired by the public input over the past three years. It does not rezone anybody's property, it does not initiate new programs without proper review, and it does not stop any building or zoning permits. From the second reading, we talked about the concern that some council had about where minimum acreage is mentioned in the document. We went through and identified the areas where minimum acreage was discussed as being part of the character of certain types of land use. In particular, the agriculture and timber use and the rural use. These are two types of future land use that connect to the network through the Future Land Use map, and they have specific characterizations as each future land use does in the Comprehensive Plan. So in the comp plan, there is a reference to a minimum lot size for anything that would be in the agriculture and timber use, that the minimum lot size should be five acres. In the rural, it says that the rural areas should, if you're using a major subdivision, that the minimum lot size should be three acres, and if you're using a minor subdivision, the minimum lot size should be one acre. So the difference is a reminder for those that don't remember the difference between a major and a minor subdivision. A minor subdivision is five acre, or five units or less, does not create a new roadway, and is often used for conveying property between families, whereas a major subdivision is anything more than five units, often ends up in a formal residential neighborhood, as you see many different places across the county. So where does that impact come through this comprehensive plan? So like I said at the beginning, this does not unzone, rezone, change the zoning of anybody's property that's there. What this does is underlies any future zoning changes in the area. What we would do with this is, in these areas that are dark green, if this went through with that major subdivision, or the subdivision minimum, we would look to and make amendments in the UDO that would make the minimum lot size match the comprehensive plan. That would be something you would vote on. This is recommended through the Comprehensive Plan. If you choose that that is not the way you want to go, that's absolutely fine, we'll make the decision, whatever decision you make tonight, we'll put into the comp plan, and it will go forward and inform the UDO. Another thing I want to make a point on this is that this section for agriculture and timber also recommended that the major subdivision option not be used. Agriculture and timber uses are set aside in particular to maintain agricultural lots as larger lots for agricultural uses, and timber lots, larger lots, that could be used for timbering. It is not meant to be residential neighborhoods, it is not meant to be a suburb, it is meant to be an area of agriculture and timber uses, the most sparsely populated, the ones with the larger tracts of land. That's the reason for this recommendation. Now, again, this is a recommendation. If at any time during tonight you want to change that, that's fine. If during the time, if you don't want to change this in the comp plan, and we get to the UDO, and you have changed your mind, that's also your option. But you just, we'll just need to give you the good information to back it up. In the rural land use category, we have many more districts impacted by this one. This one says that if you have a major subdivision, that the lot sizes should be three acres, and if you have a minor subdivision, the lot size minimum should be one acre. This is to help encourage the rural characterization. Rural is a buffer between the agricultural area and neighborhoods and suburban and urban areas, so they tend to have larger lot sizes. Again, this is absolutely part of your review here. If you want to strike that, strike it. This is something that was recommended. If it doesn't work for you, let's make it work for you.
I've got a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
That east of 522, I've talked to you about before, that you got it five acres, that there are a lot of timber out there, but they also, a lot of people's got farms, and they've got kids that they want to give a couple acres to to build a house. And if we go in there and put five acres, it's going to be some issues, because a lot of these farmers out there now, as their kids is coming up, getting married, and they're going to want to pass along acre or two from to put a house, we're going to have some issues with that. It's good, there are some timber area out there that's been owned, and it's pretty secure to stay that way, but the other areas east of 522 that don't fall into that category. So I think we need some changes to that, far as.
The sentence that's.
Because they're going to be back up here aggravating you and council and say, I need to get, I need to give my kid two acres of land to put a house on. Y'all got it as five acres. I mean, we can, we can stop a lot of problems right now.
Right, I agree, the sentence is bolded, if you propose to strike it, it'll take it away, and it won't be an issue.
Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir.
Does this apply just to new subdivisions for the five acres or three acres?
This would only apply to proposed changes once the UDO is rewritten. It would not apply to anything until we propose a change to the zoning that reflects this. This doesn't currently exist, this is a recommendation. Like we said before, this doesn't automatically apply anything. What this does is it gives a character overview, and it says, in the future, when you're looking at this area, specifically when we're looking at the UDO rewrite, they recommend that in order to maintain larger lots available for agricultural uses and for family farms and timberlands and the like, that you don't, that you don't allow lots to be less than five acres, so that those tracts that are usable can be, can remain. But on the flip side, you also have families, like Mr. Mosdeller says, that need to separate property, and need to be able to give it to their children.
Well, are we going to have an unintended consequence? If I own 10 acres, and my brother Brian here owns 10 acres, and we're adjacent, but for some reason, he needs a little bit more of mine, so we want to cut out one acre and move it from my parcel to his parcel, under your five-acre theory, or even if we go to, well, Billy, I'm like you, five is way too much, it's got to be one at the very low, at the very, very least, but even if it's just a half acre, if I cut a half acre out, want to give it to him, are you guys going to tell him, no, you can't subdivide into a half acre?
If this Comprehensive Plan passes with the wording unchanged, and if, after that, the UDO is changed to include that into a register, into the law, then yes, we would have to say, I'm sorry, it doesn't meet the code, would you like to go to BZA, or would you like to go to council and talk about it?
Well, I think, I think everything we seem to do is one-dimensional, and this is two-dimensional, and I would think we could have some verbiage in there that would allow that to happen without having to bother council and/or the BZA.
I would recommend, honestly, just take the sentence out, and we'll address it during the UDO. That way you don't have a push to make it happen through the comp plan, you can discuss it at the limits that you feel are the best fit at that time, because you are not limited to what you can discuss during the UDO just by what comes out of the comp plan. But if we have it in the comp plan, we do have to at least address it. That means talk about it, not necessarily vote on it. If you don't decide it's a bad idea.
I guess we need a motion handy to take it out, is that correct?
If you want to take it out, that would be part of the motion to amend the vote to take it out.
All right, do we need to do these separately, or one of?
You can, if you want to do the same, ooh, shine, did I do that? I'm sorry. If you want to do the same for the other one, then put them together. But if you don't want to do the same for the rural, then I'll defer to Ms. Merk to Pont.
So exactly what sentences are we taking out?
Well, the one that's, that's in bold here.
Bold, right.
This land, the use of the major subdivision processes. Hello? I'm, I'm, I'm good now. The use of the major subdivision process for residential development should not be allowed, and the minimum lot size should be five acres. Take that out, it'll give us some flexibility when we get to the UDO.
We also have in the rural area too, right?
In the rural area, you have a sentence that says, major subdivision should be allowed with a three-acre minimum lot size, and a minor subdivision should have a one-acre minimum lot size. You can take that sentence out as well.
I'm going to make a motion to remove both of those sentences from both of.
I'm going to make a motion to remove both of those sentences from both of those, the rural land use category and the agricultural and timber land use category.
And I second that, because I sure don't want my constituents to see me voting for those kind of acreage requirements.
We've got a motion and a second, a motion for Mr. Louise and second for Mr. Blackman. Any more discussion on this amendment? We will do these separately. Let's go on and vote on that amendment. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. All right, and then when we do get into the rewritten UDO, personally, when you get into the major subdivisions in those rural areas, they will need larger than one acre lots. For, for, if you've got a, a major subdivision's over how many houses?
It doesn't even need to be houses, it's lots.
I mean, how many lots?
Over five, over five. Or if you're creating a road.
Okay, that'll be something down the road. All right.
One more thing to address, if you don't mind, sir. The, the, during public input, Mr. Odell Steele asked about his future land use category for his property. He has been in touch with the Economic Development Division, he's been in touch with planning, he attended a TRC meeting. He's been working toward getting this into a, a development area. It does, it is not supported by the rural zoning. It would be better supported by growth, which is in that same area of Grace Avenue where his property is. I can show you a map, or you can decide to recommend to make that change for those properties, because we already have the data here, that I can do that.
I make a motion that we change those properties.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Blackman, and second for Mr. Barnes to change the...
And they would be changed from rural to growth.
Rural to growth.
But I got a discussion here. If, if staff's looking to make all these changes, why would y'all have an area that's got water and sewer not to be growth? I mean, do we need to go back and review all of our water and sewer lines before we continue down this path? Because, I mean, you know...
No, sir, that's what the amendment process is for. When this started, the process for the Future Land Use Map two years ago, it wasn't as developed as, as it came along. We have edge water in the area that is bringing water and sewer along at a pace, you know, changing every few months, where you're stretching it out. Every time somebody puts down a new section of water and sewer line, the map is different. So we have to deal with, we have to stop it at some point.
That water and sewer was already there for a long time.
The water was for sure. The sewer, I know we talked about the, the sources and multiple sources during TRC, but either way, it was undeveloped, it was next to a large development. It is something that Mr. Steele caught, and if we catch more after this, we'll bring them to you.
Do we not have maps of where the sewer lines are in Lancaster County? Can we get that from Lancaster County Water and Sewer? I think that'd be advisable.
Sure, I'm sure we can. I mean, they, and they also have future maps too.
Yeah, and in addition, this property is on the line between water and sewer from Lancaster and water and sewer from the city. So...
Oh, it's got two accesses then, so it's double.
It's got two potential.
Yeah, I just think we ought to look at those maps and, and see where, where it is and where the future maps are.
That can be the first thing we'll do with the comp plan once you pass it. We'll reevaluate.
All right, let's go ahead, and any more discussion on the, that tract of land? All right, we have a motion on the floor to change it from rural to...
To growth.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Passes by a vote of six for and one opposed. All right? Ms. Harden?
All now is to vote on the document and make it official.
I think there's going to be a little more discussion.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, you're back to your main motion as amended twice now, so you can have properly discussion again, as I believe you're saying needs to be done.
Sure.
Who, who would...
Well, you know, I've gotten a lot of emails from people in Indianland wanting concurrency left in. You know, my, my thing is, I don't know what concurrency is, because staff is not giving it to us. And, you know, y'all, I just don't believe in giving an inch and taking a mile. I think those are the kind of things that should be ironed out before we have it in this document. And if that means delaying this document till we get that, that definition, then, then so be it. Why are we going to hurry and rush into something that we're not going to be happy with, just like happened on the last UDO, how many years ago? Eight years ago, when council passed the UDO and said, "We'll figure out what's in it once we pass it."
But however, Mr. Blackman, all this Comprehensive Plan is doing is to study it. It's not making any recommendations, it's just a study.
Let me ask, Allison.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible, because we have the Panhandle, greater Lancaster, and southern part, is it possible that we could do the concurrency part in the Panhandle? Because we don't need it in the greater Lancaster area or the Kershaw area. Is that possible?
It would, well, I'd need to study it to be able to tell you how it's possible to do that. But there are, if there are reasons that we have where laws need to be applied differently in one section of the county to the other, like we do with the zoning, then that study will tell us exactly how to put that through.
Because I can understand the interest in having infrastructure in place before building, but in Lancaster or the southern part, I don't think it's, it's a need right now for us in this area, but I do think it's a need in the Panhandle.
I would argue that we heard a need for that at a recent rezoning. And I don't think that the issue is the infrastructure has to be in place, there at least has to be a plan to put it in place. I think that's a, a real important point.
And all of that would come to the discussion table if we were allowed to discuss it as part of something we may or may not pass forward. All I want to do is look at it.
I think we need a clear understanding of what it means. You know, whether it's infrastructure in place, or having a plan for infrastructure, or what. But in order for us to move forward countywide, I think we need a clear understanding.
I can definitely give that to you. We got the, the short version that I've told you at each time we've talked about it, which is, it would mean that development couldn't move forward unless there was infrastructure in place. But that infrastructure that would need to be in place is defined by the council through the process of studying and then potentially passing a concurrency regulation. But it is, it is what you decide it is, once we get into that study.
But it really doesn't stop the development, it doesn't say that it won't come. What it, because council can, can override it.
Yes.
If council wants to go ahead and improve a development, and there's no infrastructure or no plan for infrastructure, that's what this council would do.
That's what...
And I'm not prepared to do that.
That was, that is what appeal would be for. But we would look at it, we would look at the parts of the infrastructure, we'd study the infrastructure, see what's, what's in the most need and what is most fit. I'd map those areas out, look at the areas where we need it, look at the areas where it might not be as required, and then go from there. But I need to be able to go forward and look at it.
Ms. Harden, this is similar to what you're talking about with the assignment of development rights as well, right?
I'm not quite sure.
Where we have the, the review process that's built into the Comprehensive Plan. That's what I'm talking about, how it's similar.
Yes.
It's these, these two items are concepts that you are just approved under this Comprehensive Plan to review, and then provide us, subject to that review, recommendations of what you think concurrency and assignment of development rights would apply in certain areas of the county or not.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All, all we're doing is just saying, yep, go ahead and research it.
Look at it, yeah. Give me the okay to look at it. Because the neighbors wanted it.
Last, excuse me, last meeting, we were talking about this concurrency, and Gina, our lawyer, said that, once we vote on this, it becomes state law, county law.
No, sir.
No, sir, what I said was, as Councilmember Louise just said, this is a plan. This is a recommendation for it to move forward, for the Planning Department, the Development Department to look at concurrency. For concurrency to come to you and come to Lancaster County, you all would have to pass legislation and ordinance that puts that into place with your regulations, much like Councilmember Louise was talking about with development rights and so forth. It is something separate outside of this plan. Adopting the plan is required by state law. You have to do that. It has recommendations in it to move forward, to do some research, review of different things. This is one of the things that's being recommended to be reviewed, researched, but if it is something that you want to do, it requires separate legislation outside of this ordinance.
And Ms. Merk Dupont and Ms. Harden, even if this Comprehensive Plan said, "You shall do a concurrency standard in this comp plan," that does not mean that this council, during the ordinance review, has to do that. All that this would require them to do is to consider that, because it was in the Comprehensive Plan. So this Comprehensive Plan really does nothing except provide recommendations and things that we should consider whenever we're looking at an ordinance. So I just don't know why we're spending so much time arguing details on something that has no requirement on us and is not binding on us.
Because like anything else, you start an inch down that road, and that just seems to continue the momentum forward, happens all the time, and all I'm saying is, let's study it before we put it in the comp plan, so we'll know exactly what we're talking about. What I heard originally from the staff was, staff would make the decisions based on concurrency. That was what I, I'm glad somebody else heard it too. That's not my view of what this council should be doing, and, and I don't want this council to accidentally give up their responsibility and take the easy way out, let staff do the, the deciding on concurrency.
This does not do that.
No, and I apologize.
No, it doesn't, because it's not, it's not defined.
We've talked about it multiple times, how this is all a recommendation, and any concurrency review will come back to council pursuant to the ordinance rewrite.
And we could take it out and still do that.
But then we take out the assignment of development rights as well.
Huh?
Then we take out the assignment of development rights as well.
Whatever.
Okay. I care.
I'm just totally baffled.
Can I clarify real quick?
We talk about control and growth, and here we got a, a good way to look at it and, and...
And let's do it, Terry. I'm not saying don't look at it. I'm just saying it doesn't have to be in the document.
Just study it, just study it. All we're doing is studying it.
I, I think this document is a series of recommendations that we need to consider. We are not making a decision, because every one of those considerations has to come back to us in the form of an ordinance. That's the only way it becomes law.
The, the, to clarify the, the concern about staff being the ones deciding concurrency, absolutely not. After a process of maybe a couple of years, I think it would take two to three years to get all this through, the end result is that the council has set up some conditions by which they say, "Okay, if you meet all these conditions, you're okay to move forward. If you don't, you've got to come back to us." And that's what I mean by staff looking at it. If there was anything in that list that you gave us that was out of line, they'd come right back through the appeal process. We would not be able to give them one inch without your approval first.
When we first started talking about this, I asked, "What other counties, municipalities are doing this?"
Yes.
Y'all gave me one article about Lexington County who just started doing it. There's no data behind what this has caused them to do or not do, what was good, what was bad. It was just simply they're starting to do it. Gave me no information whatsoever. Are there counties and cities doing it? And if so, let's, let's...
I can give you 22 years of one particular coastal county or municipality that has been doing it all along, and any municipality that has their own water and sewer division are already doing this as well. There are things like the annexation provisions where county, or cities can't grow unless you have the water and sewer connection agreed upon, and they force annex. Those are the kind of concurrency issues and laws that cities use. The reason that it's harder to find in counties is because not all of the counties own their own water and sewer delivery. A lot of the municipalities do. Municipalities do this every day, because they own everything. The reason that it has to be discussed at this level for the county is, we don't own the water and sewer delivery. If we did, we would already be out there saying, "You don't have a water line, you can't make it until the water line is ready." It's, it's something that is...
And that's kind of obvious to me, I mean...
I agree, however, we have a situation where we need to be able to say, not only the water line, but the schools, the roads, and the like. For this particular county, it's a little more challenging, and that's why we needed something, to look at something that would help us a little bit more down the road to be, to grow in a better way.
How many times has a school commented on the development? That's been sent to you guys, and you guys forwarded out to all department heads in the school district. How many times has the school district responded that, hey, you know, we might be maxed out?
They started responding in the last month because of the work that, that Mr. Barstow and Ms. Snowden worked to make the connection between the new administration. When the old administration retired and left in the summer of last year, it took a while, there was a gap, but we're starting to see answers back, and I'm really hopeful that the answers will become a little bit more fleshed out as we go.
Okay. Again, just let me, just let me know, I'm, I'm obviously not going to vote to pass this, or I'm going to vote to postpone it, but I'm, I'm ready to quit talking about it. So just give me some counties that have actually used concurrency, so we can see how they function.
Is it, Mr. Chair, is it possible that we could, could, Allison could bring us the information back on the concurrency, and we pass this tonight, or we need to pass that in conjunction with it?
There, we, we gave you information about Lexington County who is starting the concurrency. If you would like, there's, there's several different ways you can handle this. Because we're on the third reading of the entire Comprehensive Plan, talking about this one issue, I would like to ask that you pass the comp plan, as we have it, with the amendments you've made, and let us come back to you with some updates. And if in the future, the board decides that concurrency is absolutely not in our interest, we'll amend the comp plan to take it out.
Let me ask...
Agree with that.
Likewise, not Panhandle, South, greater Lancaster.
We can just, we can take it out later, but let me get something, let me get it started, and let me get some ideas stewing.
Let me make a comment. I, I agree, you know, in the Panhandle, in 2010 to 2020, it grew 246%, I think is the number. Lancaster grew 3%. And I could not support concurrency in the Lancaster area. I, I could support it in the Panhandle, if that could be, I don't know if that could be hashed out, but I cannot, I, I can't move forward, support this document moving forward.
Concurrent, I'm sorry, concurrency is not going to make a difference in the Panhandle. It's already pretty much developed as it is. Concurrent would apply in the other areas of the county. Like, the whole point is to prevent what happened in Indianland.
There are some areas left in Indianland that haven't been fully developed that it would help in.
Yes, but not...
But, but yeah.
But, but the biggest impact would be in the rest of the county, and it's to prevent what happened in Indianland from happening in the rest of the county, which to Mr. Graham's point, we heard a lot of people from other areas of the county that were saying exactly that. Do not do to us what you did to Indianland.
And you even had a planning commissioner speak like that.
We did.
I mean, so I, I'm asking my constituents, do they really know what their constituents want?
I do.
You know, this is a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, and that's why we think we need to study it and bring it to you. If we, if we come up with something that is useful to you, then you still have the opportunity to look at us and say, "Thank you." No.
Would anyone like to make another motion on...
They have it.
Anything related to concurrency, on how to look at this, or...
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we take the references to concurrency out, but we still make staff move, or request staff to move forward with the idea of studying it. So that would be my motion, that we pull our references to concurrency out of this document.
And at any time, can we move forward with that if need be?
A second, what Allison said.
All right, we have a, a motion to take concurrency out, and I have a second for Mr. Mossdeller, discussion.
Can we put it back in at any point?
What's the point?
It may be a mute point, but it's an option.
If you have the votes to do it, yes. If you have the votes to do it, yes.
I mean, what's the point? This council's sitting on his hands again.
Ms. Connect, connect.
What I don't want to do is, because growth has not affected us yet, what we're trying to do is make sure what happens in Indianland doesn't happen, but do we have time to do that? Will the concurrency make a difference one way or the other?
Considering there's a bunch of growth coming to the Lancaster area from the city area, much less outside the city, we have a 900-acre tract that's, that you've approved to go to growth from rural, that concurrency would make sure that we have to... to go to growth from rural, that concurrency would make sure that we have to look at things like the schools and that and may provide for a leg up to give us something to discuss with a developer, like setting aside a school property or setting aside something for emergency services outside of, of other realms that we have.
Can we not have that discussion?
Yeah, every time this development comes, we can have that discussion right here on this council.
But not every development is coming to you. Not every development is coming to you.
Well, any, most of the big ones will require rezoning. And it is an option to do a development agreement if the developer wants to.
A development agreement is an option, but a conditional zoning on, based on you give us this, is contract zoning, which is illegal.
I can't.
We used to do that, I think, before I got on council.
We have a motion second on the floor.
All right, you have for another, any more discussion on that amendment before?
Will you reread that amendment, please?
Restate your amendment.
I just made amendment to take out any reference to concurrency in the 2040 comprehensive plan.
And that it would be studied.
And we would direct.
Outside of that.
Yeah, we would direct staff, which we don't have to make a motion to do that, we can just let, tell them to, but the staff would go ahead and study concurrency and see if we can implement that.
Why not just leave it in there and let them study it?
It's easier to put it in later than it is.
Ah, that's a bunch of.
I've already, I've already made that point.
If we get left in there that didn't, that we don't, that we don't see, study it and see.
All right.
Mr. Blackman, are you, are you okay with amending your motion to add also the removal of the assignment of development rights?
No, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
We, we have Mr. Blackman's motion on the floor. Any more discussion on his motion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. All in favor of Mr. Blackman's motion, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. The motion to remove concurrency passes by four, four and three opposed.
I would like to make a motion to amend the comprehensive plan to remove references to the assignment of development rights.
To remove what?
References to the assignment of development rights.
The transfer of development rights.
Yes.
Second.
Discussion, could you give us some information on that out? Explain exactly what that would mean.
What that would mean is it was a program that would protect agricultural lands while promoting greater density by moving density away from protected areas like agriculture and timber, allowing the property owner that has the agricultural and timberland land to still make money off of their land development options and selling that right to somewhere else and then retaining their land. So essentially, if you have an acre of land that you can put four houses on it, you sell the right to put those four houses somewhere else, you get to keep the land, you have an easement on it that says you can't put houses on it because that right's been shaved somewhere else. People can keep their land and make money on the development options and still farm it and still timber it.
I, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Louise on this. I, I just don't think it's needed. I'm, I'm concerned we're going to have 300 acre tracts of land that have 200 acres of wetlands or whatever and they're going to transfer those rights. I think our public, our, our map shows the growth areas and I think the density, you know, to me, there's enough density there. I wouldn't want to try to create more density because we, if you're taking it away from somewhere and adding it to somewhere else, you're, you're changing the density on those parcels.
It wouldn't go anywhere that the council wouldn't assign it. But yeah, you're right, it has to go somewhere.
Any, any more discussion on that? We have a motion on the floor to, to remove the, what do you call it?
The references.
Development rights.
Yeah.
You're not going to have no development rights at all.
No, it, you can't transfer them from one piece of property.
Right, transfer, I know, okay.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise, we have your unanimous approval of taking out the development rights. Just a couple of questions. I don't know the exact page, but I just don't see where a compensation study, I think it's LC 4.1, fits into a comp plan. And also, I, there, there's some references in there to climate change. I don't see where that's had anything to do with development. I say everybody's opinion, you know, they base it on more storms, but if you look back, 1916, the great flood of this area, there was two hurricanes and dropped 20 inches of rain in one day in the Charlotte region. That's just my opinion.
I agree with that.
All right, are there any more discussion? Hearing none?
Were we going to make any motions to do what you just asked?
I, I was just, I just put it out there for information, I didn't know if there was any interest.
Well, I mean, I, I said it too about the comp, compensation plan and the reference of adding new employee, that's just beyond the scope of I think what the Journal Assembly intended when they said you would have a comprehensive plan if you're going to have UDOs. So I make the motion that we take out the reference to the compensation study and any employment, future employment possibilities.
All right.
Second.
Does that include the transportation planner and the grant writer? Does that include the transportation planners and the grant writer positions that are in there?
Because we'll do that at budget time.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Mr. Marstall, any discussion on that? I think we're ready to vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Is it unanimous? All right, we have unanimous approval to take the compensation study out. All right. If there's nothing else, we will, we're ready to vote on our ordinance. Ordinance, third reading of ordinance 2024 dash 1900 is amended.
And Mr. Chairman, for the record, I believe, and Director Harden, correct me if I'm wrong, those amendments were the agricultural timber and rural acreage removals, the steel property change to growth, the removal of concurrency references, the removal of transfer of development rights and any, the removal of any reference to compensation studies or employment policies.
All right, I think that's it. Ready to vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise, we vote passes by five, four and two opposed. Let's move on down to first reading of ordinance 2024 dash 1897 regarding adding property in the Edgewater Two Improvement District. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. McGriff. I have a second to bring this to the floor.
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Blackman. Mr. Marstall, Mr. Michael.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and council members, we have what we'll call a cleanup item related to Edgewater and the bond districts involving the forfeit land commission and Mr. Michael Season representing the county. We'll give you a little adjustment on the map that's on your agenda packet so he can speak to making some adjustments. Mr. Season, thank you.
Good evening, council members. Chairman Harper, Mr. Marstall, thank you very much for inviting me up here. I'm with Berforeman, I'm the county's bond counsel, Franny Heiser, my law partner and I, we're happy, we participated in the financing for the, partially for the regional park that was, that Ms. Stone was talking about earlier. It's nice to see that that's on, off the ground. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to appear before you. Tonight, I'm talking about an ordinance to modify the Edgewater Two Improvement District. Edgewater Two, as y'all might remember, was created several years ago, about 15, 16 years ago, maybe 17 years ago. For a significant period of time, the county had, had installed infrastructure, issued bonds to, to, to permit that improvement district to be developed. That land was not developed, it fell into disrepair, the, the property, the property taxes and the assessments that support the payment of the bonds were not paid pursuant to the normal process under state law, that, that property, if taxes and assessments aren't paid, it goes to a tax sale. And let's see, in December of 2021, the forfeited land commission and, and myself brought a plan to the county council whereby the, a multi-party agreement would be entered into. True Homes, which would propose to develop the, the property, would agree to make quarterly purchases of the lots or portions of the, the district over approximately seven year period of time. After they purchased property, it would then be platted, it would be developed, it would go through the normal county permitting process, approval process. They would intend to build homes, which they would sell to end users, homeowners, or developers that are building houses for homeowners. Once the homeowners would, would secure those properties, then they would pay the assessments and, and property taxes in the ordinary course, the assessments would pay back to bondholders. So you, you move from a, from a, an asset that was not producing any property taxes or assessments to one that would hopefully become a very successfully performing piece of property. The, since the agreement was entered into, there have been nine quarterly lot sales that have, that have been completed. I think there's a 10th one that's scheduled for May next month. The, the, the property has, has gone through the normal county approval processes, permitting processes as far as laying out plot line, plot lines and things like that for the phases. The, I think at this point, and Will Ford, by the way, is here from True Homes in case you've got any questions about the development, but I think at this point, I think about 60 properties are under contract with end users, so you actually have houses that are being built. You've got another 70 that have actually been built and have transferred to, to end users at this point. In the course of the last two years, True Homes has worked with the county's planning department, as I mentioned, as they have gone through the various phases, the one phase in particular, I think is phase four. They have worked with the county's planning department as far as laying down plot lines, easements, roads, things like that. In that, in that process, they determined that the, to, to work on the configuration that most made sense in order to maintain the same level, number of lots that were originally intended, they would need to add some property to the district. If you look in the ordinance, I'm a visual guy and pictures are kind of worth a thousand words, I guess. The last two pages of the proposed ordinance shows two different maps. This is actually property that is adjacent to one another. The, the property that is in green is in the improvement district currently. The portions of the property that are shaded in red represent property that is not in the improvement district, so it's outside, that means that it's not subject to bond assessments. Property owners that purchased those lots would not be compelled to pay assessments to secure and repay the bonds. That property is owned by two, well, it was owned by two entities that were affiliated with True Homes. It has been, that property has been transferred to the forfeited land commission, which also owns all of the, the rest of the property pursuant to that multi-party agreement. So the, and the forfeited land commission has brought this idea that the property that's shaded in red would be made subject to the bond improvement district. It represents about 3.3 acres or 3.4 acres, so it's a very small amount of property as compared to the improvement district, which is about 375 acres. So that's what's being asked of county council. The, the ordinance also contains some findings that are required under state law because this property is not in the improvement district. That means that certain things have to happen under state law. You have to have the consent of property owners, True Homes, or, excuse me, the forfeited land commission has executed consents to the imposition of those assessments. True Homes, Homes, which would be the successor by purchase of those lots, has provided its consent. The forfeited land commission has, has both approved the transfer and they've actually taken deed, the deeds have been recorded. So all steps necessary for the county to approve this have been taken, so we're bringing this ordinance to you tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, Will Ford is here from True Homes, can answer any questions you might have about the development.
Any questions?
Well, I'm confused. If I look at the first graphic under the ordinance, exhibit B, what does that mean?
That means that the sliver of property that's in green is in the improvement district and the little knob that's on the top, which is half of a lot, maybe even a third of a lot, is not in the improvement district currently.
And that would be if we adopt this?
That's correct, that's correct. And if you go to the next one, if, actually, if you look at the second, the second page, you'll see to the left of the, the green parcels, a long skinny one, that, that is the property that's on the first page. It's just that they're on different maps that were recorded in the land records, that's why they're, they're on separate pages.
Wait a minute, say that one more time, I'm sorry. If I look.
Look at the last page.
And what do I see?
This one right here?
All right, what, where's that?
This line right here, which is, these are lots that are in white. These are the lots that are shown on the first page, right here. So what you've really got is all of this property is subject to the, to the improvement district and then the, this little fraction of a, of a parcel and this little fraction of a parcel at the top of that lot.
But in the white, is that in the improvement district also?
Yes, sir.
White is?
Yes, sir.
So why wouldn't it color green?
These are on separate maps that were recorded in the land records. What we wanted to show you was the, the property that's actually shown in the land records, they're on different maps. That's the only reason why they're separate.
It, it, what's the practical purpose of this? Is it just to put more lots so they can make their takedowns every quarter?
The purpose of the, well, first of all, the, the purpose of doing this now is that they're actually developing this property. And once the property is developed, you're stuck with the, with the plot lines that have been improved by the county. That's why they're going through the county approval process to figure out where the lots are going to be located, where the roads are going to be located, where the easements, the utilities and that sort of things can be located. If the, if the change is not made, then they would have to either reconfigure lots so that they fit within the lines, which would produce a smaller number of lots than was originally intended. I think the original intent was to put 1,059 lots within this district. I guess if you look at the number of lots that are here on the side, you've got portions of lots that would be in the district and portions that would not. I honestly don't know what the effect of that would be if some, if a landowner could say, I'm going to pay half of my assessment because only part of my property is in the, is in the district. The lots that are, that are not included, those would not be subject to the assessments, which means that property owners that bought those lots would not have a, an obligation to pay the assessments like their neighbors would.
And so, that's a great explanation, like it. The only other question I got is.
Yes, sir.
When you look at the green and then that sliver of pink and then that white that arcs in, what is in that white that arcs in?
This one right here, over on the road.
No, no.
I think it's at the top, you got the, the pink and then there's a break and.
Right, right here. What is this right here?
That is.
I couldn't enlarge this enough on my little PC to figure out what the writing was.
I think, I think that's a road that's, that's curved on the side.
That's it?
Here, I'm going to bring Will up.
And that's good, it's Edgewater Parkway, that's, he just answered it, thank you.
Easy enough, thank you.
Yep. I'm good, thanks.
Just to be clear to Mr. Blackman's point, so if we don't do anything, these parcels can still be created, it's just a question of whether they're going to be subject to the taxation or not?
Yes, in theory, they, they could still be created. They would, portions of some or, or a fewer number of parcels would be included in the, in the district, so they would not be subject to assessments.
I'm good with it, I understand now what the ultimate goal is.
Yes, sir.
My confusion reading all of it.
Well, sometimes when people say it's a, it's just a minor thing or just a technical amendment, especially if you're a lawyer, you get suspicious, so.
Adding these to the assessment roll will actually, in the long run, could reduce the debt per, per lot. Not, it's not going to be, it's not going to be enough to.
It would be material. You're talking about, you're talking about three and a half acres out of 375.
Okay, all right. Any more questions? I think we're ready to vote. We're ready to vote on first reading of ordinance 2024 dash 1897. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval of first reading. We have a seven to zero. The public hearing, is it second reading or third reading?
I believe it's second reading.
Okay. All right, let's move on down to first reading of ordinance 2024 dash 1899 regarding amending the Lancaster County code related to personnel policies. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. McGriff. I have a second. Have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Horns. Mr. Marstall, Mr. Dupont.
Let Ms. Dupont, our county attorney, initiate this conversation.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, as we've been discussing since the first of the year at your retreats, we are in a position here in the county to update our personnel policies as a result of federal regulations, state regulations and laws, as well as our PIBA policies, which is our insurance and so forth, retirement benefits that we need to do here in the county. So as a result of that, we have been working on a revised personnel policy. That is still in the draft stages. It is working to come forward to you for adoption. But in order to do that, you have an ordinance on your books currently that says those policies, whether they're collectively or individually, have to be adopted by ordinance. What we are proposing with this ordinance is that we begin the process of removing that requirement so that we can move towards a resolution adoption process for your personnel policies. That makes it a one-vote requirement. You still would have the opportunity to discuss. It still would be in front of you, but it would allow for us to make changes as is necessary due to new regulations, state or federal, case law, or even PIBA regulations. So all that you have in front of you tonight is, again, First Reading to remove that one provision in the Code of Ordinances that says your personnel policies must be adopted by ordinance. The plan would be on Third Reading to have the resolution and the personnel policies, the revised personnel policies, before you for adoption. So this would happen simultaneously, but we will also make sure on Third Reading that the ordinance has language in it that says that it does not become effective until the resolution is passed adopting the new personnel policies.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Mr. Marstall.
On this, you're asking us to remove a current policy and implement a new policy that that I hadn't seen all of. I mean, I've seen pieces, but but I hadn't seen the whole document. And I can't vote on something, there's some stuff in there that that I might not like that I'm voting for. I'm not going to, if I'm, I'm going to vote for something, I want all the, every handy pages of it. Y'all just give us a little briefing of of what changes you're making, and it's not, there's some other stuff in there I'm sure y'all have changed, and I'd like to know about.
Mr. Marstall, we'll make sure you get that copy. This is just to do the first of three readings, so we won't make a change to the personnel policy. You'll still have a month to review the changes in the personnel policy. And so we'll make sure you get the full copy again of the red line that shows what is being proposed, be added or deleted, or a little bit tweaked. So we'll make sure you have that.
On ever, on the, on the whole-
On the whole policy, yeah.
On the whole policy.
I could support moving forward with First Reading, but I would, personally, I'd prefer not to have Second Reading to have that document in front of me. I don't want, I'm not going to support Third Reading unless I have everything before Second Reading of this. I'm not, that's just, that's, that's the way I see it.
Maybe I'm confused here, but I think I saw, I saw it, and what she-
You didn't see all of it?
Yes, I did, I read it, read it up. Because I got it, and I think at the last minute, for a minute, I said, boy, it took me a long time to get through those policies and procedures, and and making comparisons. Because I think in my notes, I had where I had some problems with the he and the her and all that. Maybe I'm missing something, but I read it.
We'll make sure it's set up, it's been distributed.
We'll make sure it's distributed.
Yeah, I need it, I got the whole thing.
Well, I got the whole thing from Ms. Donna Green, so I could look at it later, but I have not had time to read the whole thing through and through. I know it. I'm appalled to it myself, but anyway, one thing I did notice in there is that when employees have problems, there's avenues that they can go above that level of problem. In other words, if a supervisor is a problem, meaning discrimination of any sort, sexual harassment, there's an avenue that they can report that and feel like they can be adequately heard. The one thing I did not like was when an employee has a problem with the administrator, they're to go to our lawyer as their method of finding some sort of relief or objectivity there. Our lawyers made it very clear that she works for the administrator, and her attorney-client privilege is with the administrator. I don't, I want, I'm going to make a motion that, excuse me, excuse me, I'm making a motion, I make a motion that we change that if a person has a problem with the administrator, that they should go to the chairman.
We're not ready to change it yet. You can do that when it comes-
We're voting to approve it.
No, we're voting to take-
Oh, okay, oh, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we're not approving nothing.
I'm trying a little bit to Alan there, because I thought maybe he would know, the employees don't come to the chair, we only manage one person. He's sitting right there, that's Dennis. Dennis manages the staff. The attorney deals with the the business of the county legally, but Dennis supervises and make, and works with the other. We only manage Dennis. Now, if we got a problem with the employee, we go to Dennis.
No, no, we don't have a problem. If the employee has a problem, they need some relief.
Mr. To Mr. Blackman's point, it is fair to have, to Mr. Blackman's point, it is fair to have someone who has a concern or complaint about me to go to the chairman. That is fair. We have that.
And it go to the grievance committee, and the grievance committee will make a recommendation. The chair has no reason dealing with staff concerns.
It wouldn't be one.
I say, we, let's just, let's just, let's just hold this till-
Let's, yeah, we-
Let's stick a pin in this for when we're going to actually talk about that.
That's right.
I actually agree with Mr. Blackman and and the chairman that if it relates to the chairman, I mean, if it relates to the administrator, who is our employee, then they, our employees should be able to talk to the chairman about it, yes.
At this point, we're not, that's not on the table. So that is not, that's not what this discussion-
You mean, you're wasting time talking about it?
You be putting the chairman in a position, you never put him in the middle of your problems.
That, that, that is not what this ordinance is about. We're just asking to remove, change it from being a-
And I apologize for that, I jumped the gun.
We, we, we will discuss that when we get to that point.
Thank you.
All, all they're asking to do is to change it from an ordinance to a resolution, and this is just First Reading of that. That's all this, that's, that's the only thing that's involved right now. Any more discussion?
I'm ready to vote.
We're ready to vote. All in favor of First Reading of Orders 2024-1899, raise your right hand. All right, we have unanimous approval, First Reading of Ordinance.
I'd like it to be put on non-consent, though, next, next-
It'll, it'll stay on non-consent.
All right, I would like that, that plan, plenty of time to study it to the day or two before the meetings, if you don't mind.
Yeah, if we, if we can get it-
Yeah, we, we do need-
Right after today's meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, we need, we need the final version. Let's see, discussion and action items. CTC appointment process, Mr. Marstall.
Mr. Chairman, we bring, just for the discussion item tonight, is that as we've had practice, that the County Transportation Committee is appointed by the legislative delegation, and there's been a vacancy that's been created by members' illness. And so there's been discussion with some members of the delegation about how they might want to consider council district representation on the CTC. However, there's no formal process for the council in terms of representation just by the delegation. We put some information in here about if you want to recommend to the legislative delegation how they do appointments to the CTC is just a conversation for tonight. Again, the CTC is appointed by the delegation. They have a few stipulations about it has to be composed of seven members. They can be appointed to represent all sections of the county. They do have to have some representation of the municipal as well as the outlying areas, but otherwise, there's not a lot of criteria. And they usually in the past have taken your recommendations. And so if you want to make any changes or any other recommendations for that structure, that was what this conversation was on the agenda for.
Go ahead.
You know, I read the information provided about the Transportation Committee, but the norm here, the norm that we have been doing for so long is making sure our entire county is represented. And the best way we could do that is assign it to districts. And the fear was that no district would have more representation than the other. The way we were doing it with seven was pretty fair. I mean, I had a representative, he had whatever. So if the delegation is going to take over that process, it's not a way to be skewed and it becomes too political.
It is their responsibility, it's not, it's not ours.
I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the way we were doing it, the delegation looked to us for our recommendations from the districts. But now, if we're going to move and change that, I still want to be represented on that Transportation Committee. I don't want anybody in Alan's area speaking for my district, because we probably wouldn't get any input.
I think, you know, with the re, what, what happened with the re, the 2020 redistricting, you ended up, plus you had some movement amongst-
Well, I think we need to address that. If, if, if it's not lined up, District 1, District 2, District 3, District 4, what's the problem?
But it's not, it's not our, it's not our responsibility.
I'm not saying our responsibility.
He, he, he looks for recommendations, they look for recommendations.
I'm saying, let's do what's fair to our constituents.
Well, what is clear is, is the legis, the legislation, legislators going to make, legislation, delegation, they're going to make the final decision.
I mean, you send them a recommendation, if they don't do it, that's, that's up to them.
Because now I got two in my district, I think.
Yeah, you have two, and Ms. McGriff has two now.
And I'm willing to give up one of mine, to be fair. I will, will not do but one in my district. I just think whatever we do, it needs to be fair and order and represent our entire county. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm like Ms. McGriff, every district needs representation. I got my person on there, and everybody else needs one person on there. You don't need two or three from one district, because you're going to end up getting more roads paved in that district when you got more people on that one district. So it's more even, it takes the politics out of it. It's more, it's represented by seven people that spread over a whole county. And the delegation needs to take our appointees.
And if they don't, then we say, listen, talk to your delegation, they didn't take our recommendation, because we get more calls about roads, y'all, than anything else. And I think that needs to be the fairest process that we do in this county.
But the CTC is going to make recommendations to us, and we're going to make a final decision on which roads gets paved.
They, they, no, they don't make-
It's not correct?
No.
They, they, they make the final choices on, on the spending the-
Of CTC money.
CTC money.
Terry, you're right, with the capital project sales tax, too. We could have made that road list ourselves, but we decided we'd let them do it. So you're right, we, we made that, they made their recommendation, and we, in theory, approved that list of what they recommended.
That was just one time, though, on that capital sales tax.
But if it's CTC-
The normal money that comes from the, the tax money, the fuel tax money and all, they, they decide which roads gets fixed.
And Alan, even with that one cent sale tax, we felt like if we put it to the committee, that they were fair and in order, and everybody would be pleased with that. But if we start letting the delegation name three from the south part, because you're going, you know, you might be at the state, and three from other, that's not a fair process.
I don't think that's what the delegation's asking to do.
What are they asking?
I think they're asking to continue the process that we've got in place now, but we're out of whack.
Yeah, I mean, I got two, and she's got two.
More ways than one.
That means somebody's got, somebody hasn't got one. I mean, somebody hasn't got one.
What it's going to take to get us in, into the-
I've made a nomination over a year ago. I am good to go.
You know, I'm willing to, if I've got two, I'm willing to give up one.
I mean, I only have one, I don't want to have-
The final decision will be made by the delegation.
We just give them the names.
Or legally, or we can counsel, nominate, or send them in applications by district, and then give them to the delegation and let them do with it whatever they want.
That's the way the process is set up in the legislation, yes, sir.
That's the way it's always happened.
All right, now, I got two, so how do, how does, how do I decide, one, does one have to resign, or what, what's the deal with that?
Take one of them off.
The, the, no, well, it'll be up to, the final decision will be up to the delegation.
Terry, so you, Terry, you'd recommend, Terry, you'd recommend one, and then if, and then if the delegation wanted both of them, they could take away from one of us and give you two, probably.
So what's happening is, one of the folks that I want to nominate is right on the edge of my, on Terry's district, just on the other side of the road.
Three.
You would have two, that would be the second one.
I have two, and then the one on the first.
He'd have three.
Well.
So he's not in your district, the one you want to nominate?
The one is, it's literally right on the other side.
So you can't find anyone else in your district?
Well, it's not by-
It's not in my district.
It's not legally by district.
You can't find somebody in his district.
I think what we need to do is, as Ms. McGriff said, at the heart of this thing, is to make sure each area of the county is representative. Now, if, if there's somebody that's 200 yards into Terry's district, and it might be a little bit more, and Mr. Luis wants to nominate that person, I don't see a reason why he cannot do that, as long as that person is from the Panhandle, and collectively, we're going to have three representatives that represent the three districts into the Panhandle.
And you understand that that person's not in your district?
Yes.
But he's in, but, you know, you got to understand this going forward, that we can make this process as fair and in order as possible.
You can, you can recommend whoever, who you want to from your district. I mean, it's a, it's only, would we take a formal vote on this, or?
If we are saying there is a current vacancy, and there's a nomination, you can make a recommendation, because there's one, yeah, you make a recommendation, there is one board member because of health reasons who's not been able to serve. So technically, seven members is not complete, there's only six. So if you want to make a recommendation for a seventh, and how you want to recommend structuring that?
Well, whose district is not representing?
Well, again, we do have, we do have people that are doubled up in districts. I mean, the person I appointed moved to south of Lancaster, but he still serves as my appointee, because right now, he's in, I think, Charlene's district.
Well, yeah, that's, and I'm not going to point him for my district, I'm sorry.
But let me-
I got my person.
Maybe this will help you, the timing matters. We, we said this gentleman, who for health reasons has not been able to attend, again, he's not official-
Attend, it's my representative, I'm okay.
He's not officially off per the delegation, but to get ready to make a recommendation, should this resignation letter, or he be removed by the delegation, it will create a vacancy. So the legislative delegation may be come to you soon, asking for a recommendation. So when, once we receive that officially, then you all can determine how you want to, who you want to, and how you want to suggest the legislative delegation fill a potential vacancy.
Until they come to us, we're, we're, is it, okay, so, will the, will they send a formal letter to us?
We will have some correspondence, whether email or others, yeah.
So you don't have a person living in your district? You got them?
He moved, and we haven't changed anything, because he was-
But you do have somebody you can put from your district.
I can find somebody, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we will wait to hear from the delegation. All right.
We're, we're talking about this as if we have a choice, because we could nominate whoever we want, and the delegation could say, nope, pick, pick again.
But they usually do, look, they usually do take the recommendation, they have always took the recommendation from the council. So why should they start now not taking the recommendation?
They're not going to like me having three.
All right, we, we will discuss this further when we hear from them. All right, let's, let's move down to, we are down to our executive session, I'm looking for a motion to go into- I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to the economic development project, Project Aurora, the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter related to the EMS headquarters may, and receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding legal services, and to invite the economic development staff into executive session to discuss the first matter, and the deputy county administrator into executive session to discuss the second matter. Do I have that motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Ms. McGriff, second from Mr. Carnes. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. We are now in executive session.
I'd like to call this meeting, Blackstone County Council, back to order. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion.
I have a motion for Mr. Graham a second. For Ms. McGriff, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval to come out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, council met an executive session in regards to three items. The receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to an economic development project, Project Aura. The receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to the EMS Headquarters Bay. And the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding legal services. No motions were made and no votes were taken.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn? It looks like 8:35.
So moved.
A motion for Ms. McGriff. Can I please have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Collins, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. This meeting is now adjourned.
Come on down here, Alan, so I can hug you, because you look safe.